We've had correction on previous minutes in the name of the man who came to spoke from Lawson to Law. And she'll make that correction. Other than that, if there's no changes or corrections to be made, that minutes will stand as heard this presented. I need a motion to amend the agenda, please.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Just say one second. All in favor?
Aye.
In your package you have a financial report for the end of August. The end of August with $2,288,230. General Fund was having a few issues there, but that was some large payments and it's struggling. And we're closer now that we've done a paving project. So with that, I've got it today, we're at, we're under $2 million today, we're at 1.9. But we'll wait until some money starts coming in with our sales tax stuff, see if that doesn't start picking back up. And then we'll go from there.
Well, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna, can I wait and let you talk about the opening first, and then you can go through mine?
Do the, uh-huh. Let's go down to bid opening results for fire department remodeling. You know, usually you have, you have a pre-bid conference and you have four or five people there and everybody asks questions about the specs and finds out that information. And that's not what happened on this. This is a little project. And we had one guy show up about the glass and nobody else showed up. So then we made some calls and we ended up having one bid on the metal siding, one bid on the electric, two bids on the glass, and one bid for the whole getting to with them. And, um, is there a copy of it in there?
That folder, yeah.
This is. Now, one of the things in this bid, mountain road glass bids $700, $800, and builder's glass bid $14,000. And so, okay. Then we had Liberty Sheet Metal. We'll go just a second.
It's the first one?
It is. Again, he bid, he had two bids in there. One was $30,000. To existing concrete block wall. I won't say, we're talking about the office. Did not include the demo for that, no expenses for that. Then he had another bid of $44,500 if he did the office. And the front, all the way across all those bays and gutter and all of that. Down spats to match the wall panel. That was $44,500. Horton Electric $716 and even, $716 even, that's just.
Just the one.
Uh-huh, just the electric only. If you're my type, $48,000.
Bloodhound?
Bloodhound, mhm. Said this bid includes all material labor necessary to complete all phases in demo. Metal siding, roofing, electrical, glass, and carpentry is detailed in respective scopes of work. $48,000. So there's some concrete work to be done. That's not in any bid anywhere.
And then the French drains and that?
Uh, that's not, we're gonna do that. That's not part of the bid.
Okay.
We're gonna be, I'll talk about that in a minute. Actually, that's, that's the bids. So if you, if you took the $700 and added it to $30,000, you'd have about $10,000 less than, than Jeremiah's. But that does not include any demolition of anything, no removal of anything, and no concrete work.
Did Jeremiah provide it with this?
Uh-huh.
Okay, he, he had this.
Yeah. Jeremiah's bid was phoned in, did. And then, then he produced this later. He called it on that day. So it's, you know, it's kind of convoluted bidding, kind of hard to tell what everybody was doing. And, uh, my inclination was to accept Jeremiah's bid.
And they told you for the other two, but we have two different contractors at $38,000?
Well, this one guy around here, and that's Liberty. Providing install on center panels of roof and walls in full range, colors with all trim, anchor the existing concrete wall. Fabricating, installing, and gutter down spats to match wall panels. That's just the office. That was $30,000. Uh, he had some here if prevailing waste was part of it, but it's not. Then, he says, base plus alternate bidding description, main office building in front of garage bay all the way across. That's $44,500, which we're not doing that at this time. That'll be. We've got water running in the front and back door of the office, and so we need, that's what we're working on. Those two together would be $37,800. Or about $10,000 less than Jeremiah. Demo excluded.
Okay.
And then you have electrical, which is $700 and.
Yeah.
Uh, $714.
That's $718. So it's about $9,500.
And does not include demolition.
Does not.
Jeremiah's this.
Yes, includes everything. So Jim Gray, who'd be overlooking, was pretty, he started to know what to think. You know, Jim's used to the kind of situation like we had when we did remodeling here. And I tried to explain to him, you know, this.
But these, these numbers that you're putting together didn't actually come together. They're just, this metal guy and this metal guy.
It's came from all over. The only one that came, one guy was Jeremiah's, so.
So now Jeremiah's was for the whole, is that included? It's just the office?
Yeah, not, not the bays. Because I think in the long run, we can do, basically we can paint that. Max the rest of it. Not have to put metal on it. Now, this does include, and he doesn't really say that there, but Jeremiah's will, because the scope of work included, uh, no, last man, okay. See, we're also replacing, we've got a window on the north side, which we'll probably take it out. Then you've got one on the south side of the office, you've got another one there in the bay, and then you've got a door down there, all of which has got to be replaced.
It's just.
And that's, that's on the glass.
Yeah, big cover.
That's included. And what the last man did, and what Jeremiah's gonna do also. But that's all we're doing at the bays. That door down there, you can get in and out of it, and that's where people go in to do the weights and lay it in. So.
So the only complete bid we have is this one here.
Jeremiah, Bloodhound, yeah.
This other Liberty bid, he's out of Springfield.
Uh-huh. Twenty-five thirty west pavement. Assuming that's over on the north side somewhere, the way out, west.
Is this something we're gonna try to do all in one time? I suppose.
Just the, just the office part, because.
No, I meant the whole thing. It, it was kind of invasive originally in that, but we're gonna, if it works out, we can come up with the.
If we can come up with this, but that's not for the bays. But that's, that's taking the windows out and the doors off the front. Replacing the door back. We've got a little $3,000 unit that says not part of this, that will be heated and cooling. Taking the air conditioner out. You've got natural gas, got a pipe all the way around the building. And coming out. Gutters on the back have to be fixed. And, uh, and we've got Buddy Irving moved. He's moved. So now we can get back there and do dirt work. We're gonna do that. And the French drains will be back there. We'll, we'll run them to the north, to the ditch. And Jim wants to do that before we get started on the building. He's afraid somebody will take them back and want to hit the metal.
Well, he's pretty big.
Yeah, well, I thought to tell him, I thought we had people who could run back home and hit the building. He's worried about it. When Buddy moves. Well, you know, my recommendation is we just go.
Well, it's only the complete head we got.
Jeremiah, yeah. I wanted to tell.
You know, if you're, are we looking for a motion now?
Well, yes. And if we pass that, then we've got a resolution we can pass, which gives us permission to go ahead with it. If we don't want to do that, then the resolution will wait.
So, and we're okay with money at this time?
Well, we've got lots of money. You just need to take. Hanging off the tree.
Must have to person it.
Yeah, the work ethic.
Like I am.
This'll, this'll be with the fire department.
Yeah.
I know about you.
Yeah.
It, it, it'll put it in the fire department's file.
Pretty much.
Pretty much like it, yeah.
But you can pay it. You know, my, my job's to spend the money. It's Peggy's job to tell me we don't have it. That's what, that's the way that works.
Well, that's.
And some means, and it's always somewhere in between. We have a little bit of money.
It's obvious. We've got to do something.
Yeah, we, we need to do something with it. And I told them outright that if, if they ever expect to have a new fire station built, they need to get over it. Because that piece of property is in the right spot, and that's where it should be, I think. And we're not, Lord help us, we don't need two fire departments, two fire stations. But I don't think we do. So.
If we, if we have the money to go for it, I.
Well, you know, we've got another project or two that may not come through. We got, we may have to hold off on the bathroom, you know, which is another budget.
That sounds a different budget.
Yeah.
I'll have to look. We might be able to take some out of, like our general, just our general government has some money set in there for repairs and maintenance, so we need to move some in over to fire departments. Have to do a little digging.
And it won't, it won't all be done in a week, you know, so we'll, we'll drag it out.
We're trying to, you know, to get Bloodhound to, to do the job on remodeling on the fire station.
Got a motion to approve Bloodhound, Jeremiah, to start on the fire station. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the other part of that, and I'll, I'll go in and talk to Buddy Irving. We got Buddy moved over to Copen with their permission. And, uh, got the thing moved over there that holds his crates, in good shape. And we've got a light that we'll put in for Buddy. And, uh, my, my security light. And I talked to him today, and tomorrow we'll put a dumpster over there. So he's, he's set. There you go. I did talk to him. The truck wasn't pulling quite enough today. It's got a thing on the back of it, need to pull up just, you know, I don't want, I don't want Copen truck to complain about it. So we're, we're in good shape with Buddy. And we'll be doing all the dirt work back there. So.
Can I talk to him? We have cemetery down at tab number two for you. And then I've got that original.
At what?
The cemetery. We had it down for the, the survey.
Whole cemetery?
Yeah.
I'll talk that in. Uh, we've seen the plots, then we see that we're being surveyed. Didn't we have that last time?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We've got some, some changes that need to be made in the ordinance. And we'll talk a little bit about them before she reads them. For example, we said that we would allow the scattering of ashes. My suggestion is we omit that. Let's take it out. We've allowed cremains on top of a normal vault. And we've taken that out. I, we don't have any idea how many types of something maybe has been buried, and we don't have a marker like that. And if it's just a single plot, it's just four feet wide, then you've got a marker there. You don't have much room if you've got cremains to put anything up. So the change will be one person per plot, whether it's cremains or a regular cemetery. And, um, the stones and the, the markers will have to be flat like your foot markers for VA. And they will, they have to weed eat that section. They're not gonna be able to run their mower till reach, so. And they all are gonna have to be on concrete, which the regular markers are supposed to be too. Nothing put on the ground. They'll have a concrete base under it. Twelve to eighteen inches underground, which is the same for a vault. So we've got twelve inches minimum underground. I think those are, those are, uh-huh. Those are the changes. And it, it's on here too. You'll see those. And it also goes on to say, you know, the marker of funeral home, this, oh. Those will be done by the funeral home or by the city. Cremains. And that way we don't have just anybody up there. Nobody else would have us knowing about it. The funeral homes, in Claybeard's case, Claybeard has dug the hole, done all, that's fine. And I assume the funeral home has done that too. And that's, that's fine. And if that's not the case, cremains are somewhere else and they bring them in, then we're equipped now to do that. That way we can kind of keep track of who's up there doing what.
We missed a meeting. I don't know if we talked about the SRO officer contract.
We were talking about the contract.
They were talking about that we're not involved in the SRO thing.
Yeah. If we're talking about that.
Yeah, okay.
We're not.
It was mentioned anyway.
Uh, as I under, as I understand it, the school decided to go ahead and pay the full expense of an SRO officer. And, uh, the sheriff's department and the school are doing the interviewing, as I understand it. And they've interviewed one, and also my understanding that he's the one that's working over there. And what's his first name?
Brandon.
Brandon Reed is the one that's been interviewed. And, uh, and there will be, they've got two to interview. There'll be another one on Wednesday, and that'll be web city employee that's gonna be interviewed on Wednesday. But we don't, we don't have any interviewing and paying SRO officer. It's not a responsibility we have. We're, we're out of that.
Should we pass?
That was, that was, that was the choice of the school. School made that decision.
We passed an ordinance to have a contract with them, which we never, so we're dealing with repealing that ordinance tonight.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll repeal the ordinances provided within our regard SRO with the school.
So the contract and agreement we had with them is now, will be nullified.
Yeah, they never signed it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I took it over to Jason, and he took two copies. He said he needed to read the contracts again. And so I left the two contracts, and then he said he needed to send it to the attorney to read. And then I, then I didn't hear from him, and the whole deal with his audit of the city came to an end. And they're, he chose to, he decided maybe it'd be better just for school to pay for it, so. That's what happened with SRO. Have I covered your resolutions?
I think so. If you want to finish what you have, I'll, I'll do mine while you want to do that.
Okay, take care of this. What we're waiting on is sale plots and cremains part is when they get it pinned. And Andy's taking care of that. They get to pin them. I had, I think Keith or somebody asked me sometime or another what I knew about the Country Club and Skolco. And as of today, I have, I went to a meeting, I may have told all of you. I went to a meeting at the Country Club and met with, with three of the members. Kurt Daniels, Lyle, and what's his name?
Nathan?
Yeah.
Halden?
Halden. And the discussion by Johnny, I was there just to hear what, what Johnny had to say. Johnny Merle's head of Skolco. And overall, it was that this grant was like a $250,000 grant. But you could, and it was fifty-fifty grant, but you could, your half could be, your, your matching part could be with property. Well, of course, Country Club's got plenty of property and land and all of that to match $125,000. But what would, in simple terms, what would happen is the Country Club board would, would, would sell us for a nominal fee, the Country Club, and we'd have control of it. And as, as a municipal body, we then could apply for the grant, $250,000 grant. Country Club's private, and it couldn't do that. And then you get the money back, and, I mean, there were lots of questions about it. You know, who's gonna be in charge of the money? Who'd be on the board? What's your plan for sustaining membership and all of this? I mean, there were lots of questions. And so I said, I had a few questions. I've not had a discussion with any of them since then. And my, what, what I said to them was, well, you know, if that's what you want to do, and you decide that's what you want to do, let me know, and then I'll go to the council with it. But you had three people there, and all three of them had different ideas about it. So I, I, I just figured that, that they couldn't come to consensus on it. I've not heard from them. This was before this tornado or whatever hit. And I, but I still haven't heard from them. So that's where we are with that. I, I got a copy of an email that Johnny Merle sent to somebody. And, uh, and I thought, well, maybe it's time that I.
I can go get it if you want.
Well, anyway, the question, the question that Johnny had to this woman was, in the event that that's done, who's in control? And Johnny thought it would be a joint, a board with some from the city and some from the Country Club. And that was all in this email, but I haven't had any conversation with Johnny Merle about it. So I thought, well, I need to mention it to the, to the council because I.
So would, would the city then on a golf course?
Uh, you sure would. And, and Burley and I were talking earlier. One, one of the main questions is, let's say that, well, there are lots of questions, but one of the questions would be, let's say you repair all your damage and you get everything back up and the pool's going, the clubhouse is fixed and all of that. What's the plan for sustaining yourself, which is the problem today?
Yeah.
Is, membership has gone down. What, what's the plan for being self-sufficient? And, uh, so there's more than one question about, it's not just about having a grant. But you now know all that I know about, about that. And so I just, I just haven't done anything.
Yeah, there are a lot of questions. I mean, what happens, you know, as far as liability? What happens if someone gets hurt out there?
Well, I can.
They'll be suing the city, and the Country Club doesn't.
They would, and our insurance would change.
Yeah.
We'd have to have a whole new separate department just for the Country Club.
Would they lease it from the city and have our own insurance then?
Well, they'd lease it from the city, but we'd still, you know, we're the biggest pocket, so.
Yeah.
It'd change. So anyway, I haven't even gotten into the questions hardly about it, because it just.
And, and how about the ethics, you know, with, you know, taking, I know we say we own it, but if we let a private board run it as a Country Club, what, there's an ethical question there about taking taxpayer money using for a private club.
Well, I, I can tell you that we wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that. We'd, we'd want to be in control of the board. I mean, if, if we're responsible for the money, we got to have a say in where the money go. I mean, I.
So that board changes every year.
Yeah, and, you know, there are lots, lots of hard questions about it, and I know they need help. But I'm not disgusted with. I mean, they had so many other problems come up. I haven't, I haven't disgusted with anybody.
I think the city was big up to them after that storm.
Oh, wow.
The rush crew had done a lot of work out there. And the electrical department, they had done a lot of work out.
Yeah, we're, we're still gonna help them. They're gonna, they want to move some of those trees and stuff to the back. Somewhere and just leave them. I thought they might want to burn it, but they don't want to. And we'll help them move some of it a little bit. We've got a little bit more rubbish to pick up and put in the pile. We're still down one backhoe, you know, we're, we're adding to share it with sewer and water department. And that's worked, that's worked out all right. We don't have all the brush picked up. We don't have all of our work done, but. We're down to three and a half months waiting on a backhoe. So that's, that's the story about Johnny Merle. Now, the wall that heals is coming the 20th through the 23rd. And I'm not sure exactly who's organizing all the volunteers. We're gonna need, gonna be needed for the wall. And, and we're gonna have to have three shifts of people and supervisors there through the night to watch it. And I would, I would suggest that any of us that want to volunteer, give your name and phone number to, Bill Henry is doing some of that, or Larry Morrison. Wanted to get your name on the list if you wanted.
I contacted Dean Downs. And he's, seems to be putting, organizing the workforce. He wanted, he asked me to come out on the night. He wanted, he asked me to come out on the 19th, and whoever might be able to. And that's a critical time, the 19th, be there, they put the wall up. And then they really wanted the same crew that put the wall up to take it down whenever everybody's gone on a Sunday in the middle of the night, I think, is the way I understood Dean. But if, if possible, they kinda wanted the same crew.
People that you're talking about, Dean, I thought they were pumped out of under.
He had a number, it wasn't, it wasn't quite that many, but it was several. But I told him I would be available to help.
Well, I told Bill Henry to put my name on the list, whatever he thought I could do. So if you wanna help, do that.
Bill, or Dean, or Larry, or one, get you on up.
Because you know how that is, if they don't have your name, they don't have a name of somebody involved, they're supposed to show up, you may be surprised how few show up.
Yeah.
I think that we're talking about Dean was still maybe, and he was trying to get some of the school FFA maybe? I think that's what he said, but anyways, some of the schoolboys were possibly gonna help.
And I, I don't know how well they did at the Fox Runners thing, because they, they, they're doing pretty well with the concession stand, they don't have to pay any of the help. And they got some of the gate, they helped with the gate. So financially, I think they've, they've had more than enough.
You think so?
Yeah.
Earlier they didn't, I mean, a couple of weeks ago or so.
But they, they would've made a pretty good chunk over, over this last week, and so.
Good.
I told you about Betty, you'll help Betty square the line, the Rollings building. Several, several things happened with the Rollings building. The first thing that happened was we found out that maybe some of the, some of the people who meet with a patrol, with a parole officer in the back might not be the kind of person we want mixing with high school kids who are in there playing baseball, practicing baseball pitching. So it's been arranged so that if there's a question about anybody that the parole officer's meeting, that that person meets in the morning, our kids are there in the afternoon, so they won't be there at the same time. There won't be any dressing or undressing in that building. So if they're gonna come and play baseball, they're gonna come dressed. They will come in, we made arrangements for them to come in the side door, the northeast door, not the front door. And that was another thing, they had to come in the front, by everybody's office, away by the dispatchers, and all the way back. And that door's an awful door, it has to be open from the inside, it's got a metal bar across it. So we called Builders Glass, who's gonna come and put a 42-inch glass door there, probably a panel, that can be unlocked, locked, well, unlocked from the outside with a padded bar on the inside. And that, that helped two things. Let's, the kids come in that side, they can't come in without supervisor either. Nor can parents come in when their child is taking batting practice and bring two, three kids. It's strictly a school activity. Chamber of Commerce has some rooms back there they use, they're collecting things for a garage sale, and they're using that door. We had a request, first we're a ramp coming out, then we had a request for steps coming up that ramp out of that door. Today Carl finished the steps, and they look real nice. So we've got the steps done, we'll wait for Builders Glass to put the door in. And also, at the same time, on the front, where prisoners go in, to the left of the front door, there's a sidewalk we used to make the door. The last time Reggie needed to open it, he had to kick it, get it open, it's a metal door, and it's warped and swollen and everything else. So we're gonna put the last door there with a padded bar on the inside. So we're replacing these two doors, that helps Reggie's situation with prisoners, with the kids going in the front. The kids are also, there's plenty of room on the side of the park, and the grass out of the way, so they'll park there, sit them in front. The school was plenty satisfied with that, and so with Chamber of Commerce, so we, we got through for the price of $8,000. The school did volunteer in the process to pay half of the door on that side, which will be about $2,400. That, the doors won't be put in for probably another three weeks. So that's what we've been doing with the Rollings building. I went up yesterday, and by the way, that little old red car the city's got, I drove 325 miles on low under 10 gallons, couldn't believe it. Nice ride, though. So anyway, I went up, went, I met with the lady at FEMA, FEMA. Zach Williams, who's the president commissioner of Wright County, and Jay Gentry, who is, I think, administrator at Texas County Hospital. They both applied for generators, Zach applied for a generator to run the jail and the courthouse in Wright County. Jay Gentry for some part of the hospital, and of course, we applied for three for the police department, water treatment plant, and here. And all three were approved. Our total grant is $131,000 and something. And our share is 25% of that. Now, it's a government grant, federal grant, there's lots of paperwork. Skocog will administer this, otherwise we wouldn't be able to do it. It's kinda like the sidewalk, you know, everything has to be perfect, it's got to match, it's got to come out right. And the young lady, the lady there at Jefferson City, who's there to help us, and she's worked with Jessica at Skocog a lot, they all know each other. So that's where we are with the grants, so we went up, that's, that's coming. And we will, those have to be bid out, they have to decide where they're gonna be. You've got to bid, come in to come up, we don't do that. Most of those check themselves automatically every two weeks or every 30 days, come on, kick on for 15 minutes and come off. Got to have a whopper of a generator for the water treatment plant, that's big. So that's what I did yesterday.
In the amending of the agenda, I did not have court documents on the agenda. We do have court documents for August the 17th. No, but I, that was one I just caught.
I talked about the Chamber of Commerce over in the building, I think that's what that was. Uh, the paving, have y'all seen the paving?
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, do you go out in Fleetwood?
No, I haven't seen it.
Well, you talk about something makes a difference, the way a house looks. Gosh, it looks nice. And I'm sure the end of those streets, well, I did, I drove it, I drove it orange, end of it. What was the profit plan, what did, was it an additional 35? About 115 plus 35, or 100?
135 plus, it's just shy of 160.
Say it again.
It's just shy of 160.
Okay, yeah, so that's an extra $25,000 over normal budget. There were some places in the road, adding the Fleetwood addition, where the asphalt was four inches thick in order to smooth it out, it was bad. Especially from the houses down was the worst part, Paul said. So I'm glad to get that done. But again, that's money that had to come from somewhere else, but we had to do it, had to do it, get it done. I was pleased with it. Need a motion to approve the court documents, please.
Second?
Second, all in favor? Suzanne, you wanna? Think it's through those, please?
Okay, we have ordinance numbers, and that's on the agenda, the ordinance numbers do not match. The first one is 1038, and then the second one will be 1039. I'm having a moment. Ordinance number 1038 sends an ordinance to the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 1035, which authorized the mayor and the police chief to sign a contract agreement between the Ava R1 Board of Education and the city of Ava for the school resource officer SRO program.
And motion to approve?
I'd like that motion to approve, then.
Second, all in favor?
And then second reading of ordinance 1038, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 1035, which authorized the mayor and the police chief to sign a contract agreement between the Ava R1 Board of Education and the city of Ava for the school resource officer SRO program.
And motion to approve, second reading? End of second, all in favor?
All righty. Ordinance number 1039 is an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, to repeal and amend Ava Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26 Cemetery, Section 153A, which is generally, and Section 156B, which is special sections, talking about cremated remains, to revise both sections regarding cremated remains.
Motion to approve, someone, in second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
And then second reading, ordinance number 1039, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, to repeal and amend Ava Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26 Cemetery, Section 153A, generally, and Section 156B, special sections, cremated remains, to revise both sections regarding cremated remains.
Motion to approve, second reading?
Motion, motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
We have a resolution number 2018-0912, and that is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attach the contract agreement for bloodhound construction to construct a floor, 100 foot by 3 inch by 40 foot by 3 inch monolithic slabs for the electric department.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And then, resolution number 2018-0913, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attach the contract agreement for bloodhound construction to remodel the Ava Fire Department.
Motion to approve, second?
And last but not least, is a resolution number 2018-0914, and it is a resolution of contract authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attach the agreement for lease with Betty Erby to park his milk truck on the northeast corner of Rollings Rear Access Block.
Motion to approve?
Second, last second, all in favor? Just so you know, if you looked at that, Betty pays $40 a month, plus his electric bill, and the $18 security line, and he'll pay $20 a month, and we'll link it one time a month. Usually, it's on the dumpster, so. And I've talked to him, he's also got an insurance certificate to bring, which he'll do. He's really a good shit to work with, I might add. I don't know, because it just wasn't anything difficult.
What about the hanger? Were we doing anything about the hanger? I had it down.
Oh, I missed that. We had a request to build a, a hanger, there. Now, we've got one hanger out there, Mr. Zimmerman's hanger, that has a lifetime lease. And I feel it should be our goal to own our hangers, need to own our buildings. Now, there's no way we can own Mr. Zimmerman's, at least not for a while. That lease is good to his lineal descendants, so I don't know what he has there. But aside from that, we have a request for another person who wants to build a hanger, and they want a similar kind of lease. And they're gonna want a nice, big hanger, and, and do overhaul work and, you know, all this. And lots of concrete, and it probably would be expensive, I know. I made contact with the city administrator, Mountain Grove, today, and he was going to email me a copy of a contract they've got over there. And it's a 20 or 25-year contract. Most of the contracts he's dealt with deal with leasing the land for almost nothing. And he says federal government requires that you do lease the land for some sum. And that they had use of the hanger for a stated number of years, no charge. At the end of that time, that hanger reverted to city ownership. So we're still working on that. That's, I have, I'll have a copy of that lease, I thought I might have it to present again. I would call it again. So I haven't talked to them since they came in to talk about building the hanger. I'd like for them to build a hanger. And Bill Nelson, who owns that first hanger, as you go in that brown building, that new hanger would be the first hanger you would come to upon the hill. And then you, the second hanger would be the one that's now the first hanger. And Bill, we own that hanger. I've had trouble getting this straight in my mind, what we owned out there, what we didn't, and what it was used for. But he says the building needs installation, that the doors are bad and so forth. I said, I'll tell you what, Burley and I will come out there and look at it. I, I just told him, I said, I would prefer to repair your building, keep ownership of it. And then if you wanna build on a little shed next to it, which he's wanting to do, then I said, then we can look at your expenses for that versus your rent, and make, make some arrangement on that. So that's where we are with the, with the other hanger, and we have, we've been out there to look at it.
David said FAA had to approve anything that we did.
Well, they, they won't have to approve anything, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Bill Nelson's hanger is in an approved place. The new hanger would also be in an approved place, it has to be so many feet away from the apron. And that's why, in the grant that we've never completed, that would involve some of the dyed land, that there's two acres behind. It's, it's so that if anything's built, you could back up into the woods a little bit. But this hanger would be in an approved spot, and that's the only spot we've got, and that's way up high on the hill we should commit. So your approach to that hanger would be kind of a job to build too.
But that idea makes more sense to the city of Ava, to the municipality than owning.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't want us to do any more lifetime lease things. And I know that in the beginning, we, we were really needed somebody to build a hanger out there and have a presence. And that's why we had a lifetime lease deal. That's where we are with it, I've not talked to them again about it, I really do believe. But that, no doubt, will be on our next meeting agenda. Get all the cameras? Need a motion to go into close, please?
Motion to go into close. I'll say that motion.